I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call?
Rivas?
Here.
Stone?
Here.
Sims?
Present.
Bosak?
Here.
Burkner?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Justin?
Here. We got a quorum. Sounds good. Approval of minutes for September 20, 2022, and December 6, 2022 council meeting. There's a motion and second discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. First reading, please.
The following appropriation adjustments have been brought before you. From the general fund, that 1,000 other equipment, $22,995 dollar transfer, salaries in the amount of $28,000, and salaries in the reduction of $1,661. From the lit fund, 1112, economic development, half a million dollars, salaries, $28,000. From Fund, our Fund 21.027 lead grant fund, hourly in the amount of $18,000, FICA in the amount of $1,377, travel in the amount of $2,000, office supplies in the amount of $2,337.50, other supplies, $1,500, postage, $200, training and education, $1,500.
Thank you. All right, I know we've got a long agenda here, so we're gonna, no, I'm gonna take a pause for a second. You know, I told everybody that this was Mike's last meeting, so all of his friends showed up today. He's Maiden County government over there. Sorry, Mike, this is what we got here today.
It's a roast.
I didn't say, I didn't know it was a roast. So, before the three people leave, at least, you know, maybe we should, maybe we should do this before.
Got ammunition, too.
So, yes, um, you know, I, I know it's not a whole lot, but it is a plaque, Mike, you know, it's an appreciation of your outstanding service to the taxpayer of Porter County. You know, um, what is this, your ninth year, Mike?
Yep, and ninth year, yep.
Ninth year, and, um, it, it's, yeah, when, when you called and told me the, the bad news, um, for at least Porter County, you know, it was, you know, that was tough to take. Um, I know, yes, I'm a Democrat, you're Republican, but I even think five years ago or whatever, not five, five years ago, maybe a couple, two, three years ago, talking about whether you were gonna run again, and I actually hoped that you would run again, because I, you bring a lot, you brought a lot to this county, um, and I've appreciated working with you. You know, one thing, whether you were, you know, whether you were in the minority, the majority, whether you were president, it just seemed like you always found middle ground. You always found, you know, you always governed from the middle, on the common ground, and just went about your business, um, became prepared, you were always respectable, it, you just, you brought a lot to this county over, over your years here. Um, and I think what we've done over that time has been incredible, too. You know, whether it's just been the stormwater stuff we've tackled, the facilities we've tackled, you know, our, our finances, they're in great shape, um, everything, people getting along, you know, moving forward, we've kept the bullshit out, you know, you know, the social stuff, i- it's, we've, we've came in here, we've done our job for a while now, and county government's just a way better place because of you, Mike, it really is. You've left your mark here, and I appreciate it. A little irritated and ticked that you're leaving, but, you know, good for the organization that you're going to, you know. Our loss, their gain, for sure, you know, so, um, just thank you for everything, Mike. Thank you for, you know, your friendship, thank you for the work you've done up here, you know, and don't go too far, right?
No, no way.
We need you, so, anybody else wanna say anything? Nope, doesn't sound like anybody's got anything.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I would like to make some comments. I've, as you all know, I've been here for quite a while, and I've seen people come and go, and Mike, you are, you are a absolute person that can be relied upon, you do the work of the people, you have done the work of the people, and, uh, you've, you've had an open mind and always working for the good, the benefit of the county, and that's so appreciated. I worked on two of the, uh, our committees with you, and I was very impressed with, uh, how the, how the meetings were handled and, and the input that you had at those meetings. Um, you're gonna be sorely missed, and, uh, not only, um, personally, but the county is, you've done a good job for the county, and thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Anybody else? Mike, Burkner, you're not gonna say anything to your own friend?
Well, I was gonna go last, but I'll go ahead and just say that, uh-
I've got like an hour.
Yeah. I think if there was a job description for, um, local government, uh, for an individual that would represent local government, uh, I think Mike's picture would be there, and, um, uh, you know, kinda being the newer person, now it's red, but, uh, learned a lot from him and understand that, uh, local government's success is based on relationships, it's not based on party, and I think Mike has, uh, set the bar for that. A lot of things have been accomplished over the years, um, uh, when I worked for county government, uh, I sat on the other side of the table, um, and was, uh, had the opportunity to be in front of the council, and I think that, uh, the council has come, um, leaps and bounds, and, uh, I think with Mike's, uh, presence here, uh, is a big reason for that. Um, so, he's gonna be missed, but I think, like I said, I heard a couple people say this is good for the Boys and Girls Club, so, uh, congratulations to them, and it's gonna be, uh, big shoes to fill.
For sure. Anybody else?
So, I was excited, Mike, when, when I found out, 'cause I, I've only known you for four months on the board, but when I found out you were gonna be at the Boys and Girls Club, I was excited, being a, you know, Boys and Girls Club, uh, member myself and in doing, I was excited, so I get to keep working for you, and it's a tough job, and I know you're gonna do a, do a great job for us, so, it's a great organization, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Did I see all these Facebook posts with you and your grandkids? I mean, like, you, you obviously love kids, so I think this is a perfect fit for you.
I just love my grandkids.
Seems like a great group. I think that, I'm really excited for what you're gonna be doing for the county through Boys and Girls Club, and all the different ways you've been packed, not only this county, but the other areas.
That's funny.
And, yeah, we're gonna lose a lot, uh, we lose knowledge, we lose the guy that's always prepared and then comes to meetings, extra prepared, and I've always appreciated that, because, you know, sometimes you don't know what to say, and you come through and you have it written out, and it's well done, so, I just appreciate working with you, and I wanna thank you for how, how you've given me and all the things that I've learned from you over the years, and maybe you learned one or two things from me.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
You're not expecting me to say anything, are you, Mike?
You're, you're gonna say what you wanna say, girl, 'cause I learned a bunch of you, Greg.
No, I'll tell you what, you know what, the, the biggest thing that I appreciated, well, not the biggest thing, 'cause all this stuff is so true that everyone said, and I don't wanna repeat that, but, um, you know, when I first got on, and we went out after, you know, we, I'll tell you, that's, I enjoyed that so much in regards to just sitting down at a table, having a, just an honest, realistic conversation just about stuff, and, um, it, so many people know you, it's like, holy crap, the whole, you can't go anywhere without someone knowing Mike, you know, but, uh, it, it's, that's what I appreciated, the, the just sitting down and having, you know, this is how things are, or, or what can we do, how can we move things forward, and, and that's, just like Jeremy had said, too, about the, it didn't matter Republican, Democrat, it's, uh, it's, what can we do for the county? And you are definitely the epitome of, of, uh, that, and, and it's, it's been wonderful for the community, and, uh, you know, that attitude, and it's gonna work wonders at your, your Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, because again, so many people, and so many different diversities and stuff are a part of that, and man, you just, you see nothing but, but good, and nothing but how can we do better for the county, so, again, I appreciate all that, and, uh, and I know we'll be crossing paths many times, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blaney, you've worked with Mike for a while, do you have anything to say? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but-
I echo everyone's statements up here, um, when Mike first told me that he got this job, I thought my first response was, "That's awesome for the Boys and Girls Club, I'm so excited," and then I came up, I thought, "Oh, God, this is gonna be really rough." Um, just, it's just a huge life, you've got, you have so much historical knowledge, you talk me off the ledge more than once, when I'm upset about something, um, got me back to the middle ground where we all should aim to stay, to get things done for the county, and still you're a dear friend, and, um, imagine that we'll still be crossing paths, so, well, we missed him in the county, and thank you.
I told you today I was changing my phone number.
I'll find it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Laura.
So, thanks, Mike.
All right.
Appreciate, you know.
Sir?
Your fan, though, Mike, bring your fan home. Mike, the, the floor is yours, if you would like to say anything.
I'm gonna save my comments for the end of the meeting.
Okay, perfect. So, is that one?
Suspense.
All right, so let's, let's get going, 'cause it shouldn't take long for those comments, Mike. So, uh, juvenile detention, it's like there's a reduction, my favorite. General fund, reduction of $1,661 of salaries, reason reduction needed because we hired new detention manager.
Make a motion.
Motion on the floor, second discussion. Hearing no discussion, could we get a roll call on the reduction?
Justin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bosak?
Yep.
Burkner?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Easypaysy, thank you, guys.
All right. Health Department. Health Department, I'm not sure, is it lead or lead? I tried to, I had to go back and ask my-
Lead.
They're gonna go out and find lead.
It's a lead case, not a-
Lead Grant Fund, there's additional, $18,000 to hourly, $1,377 to FICA, $2,337.50 to office supplies, $1,500 to other supplies, $1,500 to training and education, $2,000 to travel, $200 to postage, reason, reason, appropriation needed for new grant to fund investigation and manage lead causes. So, there's an additional in front of you?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion.
The grant, how long is, do you have any idea how long it's gonna last, where did it come from, or?
Go ahead. Uh, actually, it's a two-year grant, uh, the second year will start actually July 1st of, of this year, and go to June 30th of next year, so, we're parry into it, but they, they didn't get the money out, actually, to us until, just recently, so, uh, um, that's why we're just now coming before you to get it appropriated.
Does this look like a reoccurring, a grant that would occur?
I wouldn't be surprised i- if it was, because the state's really pushing for, uh, they lowered the blood lead level, they have threshold for children, um, that are up to six years of age, so, there's really no normal amount of lead in a person's body, but in children, um, they, you know, they've got a lot of hand-to-mouth activity, they can, they can get lead dust, and if you've got an older home, near a window, and the window goes up and down, they usually use a lot of lead paint on window surfaces, because it lasted a long time, and, uh, but it causes that dust, and a children, a child going along a, you know, with little moist hands, and, but anyway, it affects children worse than adults, so that's why we're testing adult, or children, so.
Okay. So, is that what this is gonna be, is going out to schools and testing, or only kids that's have potential problems?
These are, these are children that are nine months through 18 months of age, and we're, that's our target, but, uh, because that's the age, it affects a child when their brain is developing so much, but right now, we're expanding our program, and we are actually, um, testing children that come in for immunizations, we look at their age, when they come in, we ask them if they've been tested, if they haven't, we offer them a test right then and there, and, uh, then we also get, um, if children have a, a blood lead test at a doctor's office, and it's elevated, it's reported to us, so we can do follow-up on case management on that child, along with their physician.
This investigator will do, will go to their home and find the problems of-
We, we have a certified, uh, lead investigator, a risk assessor, yes.
And then if they find it, do they help remediate it, or is it just, hey, here it is?
No, we actually try to identify the source, and then, um, you know, you take away the source, you, you get their blood lead level to drop, so, that's what, and, you know, as far as remediation, we don't have the money, of course, in this kind of grant, but then maybe we can get them maybe hooked up with other resources through the state or through other resources to help with that, so. We actually have been working with lead, uh, we offered a lead, uh, prevention program for children in 95, so we actually have been doing this, and the state called, you know, back when this was offered, said, "Connie, you're already doing this, why don't you get money?" It's like, okay, I go with that, yeah.
We'll go with that.
Well, we already have one that we're discussing here, though.
Since 95.
Yeah, we had one, yeah.
Do you see any problem with lead pipes, just like, the plumbing?
Any house-
In certain, in certain areas?
Yes, well, any house that was built before 1978-
Right.
-has possibility of, uh, either lead, leaded pipes or lead solder in their copper pipes, so, uh, um, yeah, there can be, yeah.
Could be lead houses.
Then I just wanted to make sure that we draw your attention to the fact that we did change the numbers just a little bit, do you want a new copy of that, because there is, um, a lead analyzer we wanna purchase, rather than it going to hourly, so we can do the test in-house and get immediate results, rather than sending them away and contacting them several days later, uh, we can help them right away when they're in the office and give them those results. Would you like a copy of that right now, or do you-
Do you have that? Same bottom line, just-
Yeah, uh, so-
Can the motion reflect, uh, reduced hourly?
So, yeah, madam auditor, is that fine, then, the, the motion will just be for the 14,000 into the, the salaries, and then your, the-
Additional 4,000 with that in line item.
For the, um-
I'll amend the second.
To, to other equipment?
Correct.
So, the, the motion and the second, agree to amend?
Yes.
To reflect that? Okay, perfect. Further discussion? See none, could we get a roll call on that additional?
Bosak?
Yes.
Burkner?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bosak?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes. All right, the 144 to, um, create that, uh, lead investigator educator to, up to $30 per hour.
Make a motion.
Motion, second, discussion, roll call, please.
Burkner?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bosak?
Thank you.
Can I just say to Mike, I've seen, I've been here a lot of years, and I've seen a lot of council members come and go, and I just appreciate when we have council members and say to our administrators, say to me, "How can we help you with your job? How can we help you reach the public through the Health Department?" And, uh, through COVID, you know, you and Laura, you were, you came to us, you go, and to see what we were doing and what we needed, and I so appreciate that, and my expectation of all of you is the same thing, Sheila, how can we help you? You know, we've tried to be so conservative, we know you, though, but we, we try to be so conservative, 'cause we haven't had a lot of money to, you know, to spend, we've got a little more money to work with now, but we really try to be careful, but, uh, anyway, I just very thankful for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Sheila, do you wanna tell people about your, the truck quick?
Is not the time?
Well, sure, give us a- Thirty seconds.
So, you know, we got our new mobile health clinic, and right now, we are, we're working with the graphics, it should go out next week to get wrapped, um, and then, I believe, right now, tentatively, May 9th, we're looking to have a ribbon cutting across the street, um, a little bit of an event, and as you guys all know, 'cause you approved it, we just hope to do amazing things with this, get it out into the community, um, and take our services and more, education, out to the people where they are in some of those communities that maybe don't have the opportunity to get to us, um, and really just expand upon what we've been doing all along, but just get out to everybody, so, it's coming, it's promised, I know you've been talking about it for a long time, but it's coming.
It's very awesome.
Yeah, I swear. Thank you.
You're all invited to be there, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Parks and Rec, um, there's a general fund to transfer $22,995 from building instructors to other equipment, reason, transfer needed for the replacement of a dilapidated playground structure, motion, second, discussion.
Is that enough? Only $22,000 for playground equipment?
For this particular unit?
Yeah. Further discussion? See none, all in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, that's good, you were gonna give, um, a presentation, but told, not, not this month, not ready?
Yeah, yeah, I've still gotta go to the commissioners first, uh, for the proposal, and then, after that, up here.
All right.
I got a little ahead of myself, I got a couple more steps I gotta accomplish first.
All right, no problem.
Do that part.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's great, second reading.
Following items have been brought to you for your consideration on the county budget, uh, from the general fund, 1,000 other equipment in the amount of 2, $22,995 of a transfer, a salary, salary reduction in the amount of $1,661. From the lead grant fund, number 8915, hourly in the amount of $14,000, FICA in the amount of $1,377, travel in the amount of $2,000, office supplies in the amount of $2,337.50, other supplies in the amount of $1,500, postage in the amount of $200, training and education in the amount of $1,500, and other equipment in the amount of $4,000.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second, to approve on second reading, just like to say for the record, Mike's last meeting will reduce the general fund.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna roll call on, on second reading.
Rivas?
Yes.
Burkner?
Yes.
Bosak?
Yep.
Graham?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Subs?
Perfect. Attorney's report, Harold called, um, had a deposition he was in the middle of, and I said, did not look complicated, only a few items, so, he had nothing to present either, so, with that, you know, any other matter that may properly come before the council?
Yeah, did, did I miss, uh, the lit fund was a, an economic development piece withdrawn?
Yes.
I saw that on there. Hey, anything else, Jeremy?
No, the floor is all yours, Mike, I want it.
All right, settle in, folks.
I made the time to go back, room.
Here's my, uh, my actual letter, letter of resignation, but after all the kind comments and remarks, I, I may not, I may not turn it in, 'cause I might wanna stick around and, uh, you know, spend time with all you folks. Um, it's, for me, it's, uh, bittersweet, uh, the, the fact that I'm, you know, actually leaving the county council after eight years and, uh, four, four months, um, it's, uh, it was tough to get me involved with county government, uh, and when I was first approached, I was very happily engaged with the Union Township School Corporation School Board, doing great things, surrounded by kids, uh, 95% of what, uh, what we did centered around kids and joyful events, and veterans events, and, uh, appreciating the bus drivers and teachers and all that good stuff. Um, so, uh, and I was warned coming into county government that, uh, it, it wouldn't always necessarily be that joyful, um, and so I was fairly prepared, or I thought I was pretty prepared for, you know, for that, for that part of it. Um, uh, I knew, uh, in the, uh, in, in the county government, I wouldn't be surrounded by kids, which truly, that is my passion, as it turns out, ultimately, that's who I'll be, uh, serving, you know, with all, uh, with all that I have in my next, in my next role, but I, I said that I was willing to step up to the, uh, or get involved with county government, because I, I care about it, I, I think it's important, important work, I'm committed to say that, uh, we need, uh, people, uh, in county government, local government, state and national, too, people who are well qualified for the position, who are, uh, able and willing to, uh, embrace the role, and are willing to commit the time necessary to do it right, I mean, that's, uh, the first part of it. Uh, second of all, I think the next, uh, ingredient that's so important is making sure that, uh, people are getting involved with public service or public office, uh, I wanna make sure, I'd make sure that they're doing it for the right reason, I mean, why are you doing it? And if it's truly to help the people and to represent the people, versus elevating, uh, your own stature in your mind, or getting, uh, a title before your name, or accolades and that sort of thing, clearly, that's not the reason you'd want to get involved with this type of, uh, this type of a role. So, as I got involved with county government, it was all new to me, uh, said goodbye to the schools, um, and, uh, and I was willing to sacrifice, in a sense, sacrifice the joy that came with that role, uh, because I knew that although there'd be less joy, there'd be a terrific opportunity to get work done, um, and back in 2000, uh, what was it, 2014, uh, 2013, when I, uh, 2014, when I ran, uh, the first time, uh, the county was, in my view, and I said it publicly, much to, uh, uh, much to the dismay of many people, I said the county, I said county government was broken, uh, in, in my view, uh, and, uh, as I saw it, we had, uh, a county commissioner's office at, at times struggled getting along, and we had a county council, uh, so three commissioners, we had seven county council members that oftentimes had difficulty getting along, and then you throw the 10, uh, into a, into a room to try to get something accomplished, and in my, uh, I think the word I used was dysfunctional, um, and that took, uh, some of the people by surprise, uh, when I made that statement, but I believed it, um, and I was committed at that time to do everything I could do to make it less dysfunctional, and hopefully more, uh, more productive or more efficient. We went to work, uh, commissioners went to work, the council went to work, and we have, and, and I would say, over the course of the eight years of my involvement, uh, in county government, we've gotten a phenomenal amount, uh, phenomenal amount of work, uh, done, and, and this isn't to rehash history, but I think it's important to note, uh, some of the accomplishments that, uh, this board, along with the county commissioners, have achieved over the last, over the last eight years, uh, and it includes, it's a long list, and this isn't an exhaustive list, but, uh, if anyone knew the animal shelter, uh, in, back in the day, uh, it's much different, much different today, that's an accomplishment. When you look at the Expo Center, and the work that was done at the Expo Center, and how that looks today, and the asset that the county has out at the Expo Center, is something that, uh, through the renovation, everyone involved with county government should be, should be proud of, frankly, and the citizens should be, uh, should be, uh, appreciative of that, of that work. We're gonna stop there, the North County complex, North County Government Complex went through a complete remodel renovation, and in fact, in partnership with the Portage Township Trustee, we, uh, added, went, partnered with them, and added a building for the trustee's office, along with the food pantry up in, up in Portage, um, that was another accomplishment. We also took care of the courthouse, uh, which was in bad shape from a, uh, restoration standpoint, and some of the, uh, facade on the outside of the building, some interior work, and went through a pretty major remodel, uh, renovation there. Uh, 157 Franklin, we bought, and, uh, ultimately turned that into what is now E911, the prosecutor's office and adult, uh, adult probation, that was no small feat, and moved all those people from where they were, over to a new, newly renovated, uh, building. Some of the other things that people don't see so readily, but are very impactful from an infrastructure standpoint, we were talking about bridges along that, during that time, and we had bridges that, uh, were, uh, in such disrepair, that we closed the bridges And we had bridges that were in such disrepair that we closed the bridges because we were fearful of cars, and we even had conversations about school buses crossing some of these bridges that weren't well cared for, and as a result of it, were unsafe. So we tackled that issue, created a funding source for the bridges, and today we're, the county is in a much better position, obviously, relative to bridge, bridge safety. We don't have bridges closed as a result of unsafe. The other less, less visible things that were the focus of our previous administrations involve infrastructure items such as stormwater. Stormwater, most people don't think about, but I'll tell you, it impacts all the residents to some, to some degree. And the big, the biggest projects we started with was the stormwater situation up in South Haven, which not too many years ago, which was shocking to me that we lived in this day and age where you'd have, you know, a storm of the century or whatever it was, and you'd have boats going down the middle of streets down South Haven, literally. And you say, how is that, how is that possible? And that was basically because of decades of neglect and an unwillingness to tackle some of those issues that required a lot of resources, a lot of attention, and the past two administrations dug in and threw the work and effort, not anywhere near done yet. But I'll tell you, the work that's been done up in South Haven relative to stormwater and infrastructure is phenomenal work that we all should be, you know, very, very proud of. Roads impact everybody throughout, throughout the county. And we have, especially the last few years, have been very, very aggressive on paving the roads, restoring roads, taking care of them for, the maintenance for a long period of time. There's still plenty of work to be done. We haven't even scratched the surface as it, as it relates to stormwater and also roads. Along the way, we also created the foundation, which was a significant accomplishment because we had a significant, significant amount of money from the sale of the hospital that sat in an almost non-interest bearing account, earning one percent or less in interest. We created a foundation, and that alone, which was a pretty heavy lift, included a lot of cooperation from a lot of people, has ultimately created tens, tens of thousands of, tens of millions of dollars in return to the county. That was a huge accomplishment. And so I've said in the past that there's no doubt in my mind that through, through the work that has been done in the last eight years, is really as much work, if not more, than had been done in the previous twenty or twenty-five years. And I don't say that to be braggadocious about it, or say it was all Mike Justin because it was far, far from that. Involved a lot of different people who are willing to work together, cooperate, and collaborate to get, to get the work done. And that's the type of work that can be done if you have that cooperative spirit. And so, you know, I think if I had made a contribution to this, this particular body or to county government in general, hopefully it's been to bridge the gap where there might be difficulty with communication and throughout the commissioner's office or the council's office, bridging the two to work together to accomplish, to accomplish the good work of the citizens. That's what, for me, that's what it was all about. That's what I set out to do, and hopefully in some small way, I was able to make a positive contribution. Because for me, I mean, I'm district, as my plaque says, I'm District Four. And so I represent District Four very proudly. But it, it's really the work that's done, not only District Four, but it's the work that's done up in South Haven, it's the work done in Portage or Couch or Hebron, because it's not a north-south thing. In my view, it's not a, it's not a Republican or Democrat thing. And it's a, it's a, it's a Porter County thing. And I've always contended that with the hundred and seventy-five, I always say a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand odd or so, and not meaning people are odd, but a hundred and seventy-five thousand people, you know, the thoughts, the ideals and so forth that they live by aren't that different, the demands, the things that they need in their life to improve their quality of life, it's not that, it's not, shouldn't be that complicated if we eliminate, if we eliminate the distractions. And so I'm convinced in saying that we can't govern effectively in an environment or atmosphere of controversy or divisiveness. And we see it at the national level, and we see it at the state level, at nauseam, and we can't let that happen at the local level. And so rather than, rather than debating or arguing or creating divisiveness over how the ARPA money should be spent, or whether or not there should be a solar farm or not, or creating controversy or dissension about a particular fundraising event or rental, rental out at the Expo Center, whether it's the Willow Creek Road expansion or not, whether it's to renovate the sheriff's residence to what degree or not, or whether it's the Memorial Opera House, we've talked about that at nauseam over the last, over the last years. And at times, creating controversy, creating divisiveness, and the goal has to be, everybody has to work together. And so I guess my charge to this council, and also to the commissioner's office, is to say that we've got, you have, and as a taxpayer, I'll be, I'll be watching closely. There's a lot of work to be done. Roads throughout the county still need a significant amount of work and improvement. We made a small dent, I think, but we don't have a plan at this point going forward to correct it for the long term. Stormwater projects, South Haven, we spent twenty million dollars or so on, on South Haven, there's still money to be spent there. Shorewood Forest is, was second on the list of stormwater issues, and as a result of that, we told the residents of Shorewood Forest that be patient on the roads, we wanna stick, fix the stormwater first, because if we don't take care of the stormwater issue, to repair the roads would be senseless. And that's absolutely true. But we made that statement three years ago, and we're still nibbling at, taking care of some of the issues that need to be done to take care of the stormwater, and all the while, the roads, literally, in many cases, are crumbling. And so there's plenty of work to be done in that particular area as well. And so there's big ideas, big plans, you can tackle many things, ideas that people have, but ultimately, anything and everything we do has to be paid for somehow, somehow, some way. There has to be an effort to work collaboratively. The three commissioners have to work together, the seven council members have to work together, all ten of you somehow, some way have to work together. You have to communicate, work collaboratively, you gotta at times compromise. And you have to focus on, and this has been an effort, and hopefully I've made, made some progress in that, is that hopefully you can develop meaningful relationships with your fellow council members and the commissioners to get the work done, built on trust. You have to trust one another, and you have to have mutual respect for one another in the, in the work that you do. So I've had the privilege and pleasure of working in this particular capacity over the eight years plus. It has been an absolute thrill for me. I've learned a lot. I wouldn't have had the opportunity to meet some very, very wonderful people and develop the relationships that I've developed, and will, those relate, many of those relationships will last long after tonight, I can assure you. Department heads and so forth that I've had the pleasure of working with over that time and developed those friendships and relationships that I mentioned. I mean, Scott McDonald, terrific, terrific person, Lori Daly, Bob Thompson, Mike Novantini, Christie up in the development office, all those folks are outstanding individuals who've done significant amount of work, significant amount of work for the, for the county. We've, the people in the council, and especially the ones that I've had the opportunity to work with for a long period of time, Sylvia, it's been an absolute, absolute pleasure. Jeremy, our relationship has developed over the years in a significant, significant way, and I'm phenomenally thankful for that. The relationship I've had with the commissioner's office during that, during that time has been wonderful. Laura, what a, what a blessing it's been to get to know you, more specifically over, over the period of time. Jeff Good, who is an outstanding, outstanding individual, a great leader, who through his efforts, much of the work that I talked about that has been done is a credit to, is a credit to Jeff, Jeff Good. Along with Scott McClure, who's been a true asset to the commissioner's office, in my view, over, over that time. Tremendous, tremendous individual with tremendous talent that he's been giving to, giving to county government. Kurt Ellis, another credible person. Kathy Merle, Rhonda Young through HR. Vicky Urbannick and Tony Dowling, I mean, to work with them over a period of time has been wonderful. It's been a group, team, team effort. Connie, wonderful, wonderful opportunity to meet you on a professional and personal level, and Sheila, the work that you do. It's been, it's been an absolute pleasure of mine to commit my time and energy into this particular role. People from the past that I've, am very appreciative of in terms of my learning, leadership in county government. Jeff Larson was a terrific, terrific asset to the county council. John Evans in the commissioner's office previously was a terrific, terrific individual with a great leadership. Karen Conover, who was outstanding to work with and is still a very good friend of mine today. Bob Paparod, who's no longer with us, however, in terms of his leadership and contribution to the county over the many, many years, what a, what a treat it was to get to know, to get to know him on a more personal level. So to me, it's always been about the people, it's always been about the relationships. If you can work together, you can get a lot more done and also have fun along the way. So I, you know, without hesitation, I leave here with my head held high on the accomplishments that we've made, and with a very, very full heart based on the friendships that I've gained and I'll have, I'll have forever. And so for this, I thank each and every one of you and everyone that played a role in my county government experience. Joy, I don't wanna forget you, though it's been wonderful working with you over the course of the entire, entire time. And so I especially, I guess, want to thank the voters of District Four who entrusted me to occupy, occupy this temporary seat. This is not Mike Justin's forever, I'm borrowing this seat, and I'm gonna leave this seat and someone's gonna occupy it. We're here to serve on a temporary basis, to do our work, represent their interest, and that I've done, and feel very, very happy to have that opportunity. So for all of you, thank you, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Mike. You'll indeed be missed, Mike, so, but you're right. Government moves on, somebody else will occupy all these seats one day, so.
Sure.
With that, anybody doesn't have any? Everybody's got anything to say?
Other than Ole Miss baseball. Because you know Jeremy Ravis' son is a starting pitcher at Ole Miss, had a chance to go down there a couple weeks ago. Phenomenal pitcher, one of the most consistent pitchers according to the head coach there, which is a pretty, I guess the thing is, we have a lot of kids in our community that do awesome things, and I wish we knew more about all of them because it is so cool to know that people from our region are doing phenomenal things, not only here but beyond. And I will tell you, one of the coolest things I saw, and I told Jeremy this, I think I told you, but anyways, I'll tell you again. After the game, the kids go onto the field, and the fans have a chance to go out there. And seeing these college kids treating every little kid like they're just golden, anybody, signing autographs, balls and stuff, it is just so neat to see the younger people, and these are college kids just reaching out, too. And then, that was awesome, but then we go to a restaurant afterwards, we're sitting there eating, and people came up to his son and congratulated him for a wonderful game, and it was so neat, and thank you for being a part of Ole Miss, that kind of thing, and it's just neat to witness, but I just, I appreciated that, I appreciated the, you know, the invitation down, and it was an awesome experience, but I, and I wish more people would, you know, if anyone, I would go to more places if people, you know, did that and stuff in our community, and it's just.
Get a bus, let's go.
I'm telling you. Well, then maybe Ole Miss, it could be other people in the community have kids that are going, you know, playing in these awesome arenas and stuff, and it's just, it's neat to see our own people from our community going there and nice to support it. That's what I mean, it was just, it was so cool to see. So Jeremy, I appreciate that, and see your kid in the pros someday.
Thanks for coming down, Greg. It is a treat, and I think that we don't do enough of celebrating our youth. Brad and I have had these conversations, Mike, you know, Mike going to the Boys and Girls Club. It's, we've gotta invest in our community, we've gotta invest in the social infrastructure, I call it, you know, we've gotta make sure we're investing, you know, in parks, investing in sports facilities, investing in arts, our opera house, you know, and stuff like that. We have to give things for kids to do, you know. To me, it's, you wanna keep, you know, crime low, and you wanna keep our kids here when they graduate high school and college, you have, they have to have opportunities, they have to have jobs, and they have to have things for their families, you know, for the kids to do, then when the family, you know, to do things as a family also. It's important that, you know, we, people may say, well, that's not our charge. I would disagree. You know, quality of life is a huge part of what we're doing, and we need to make sure we're, we're investing in that social infrastructure. You know, being involved, Mike, what you're about ready to embark on is, to me, that's part of that social infrastructure. What Valpo is doing with their park system, we really need to, you know, figure out our park systems to take it to another level, you know, there's no doubt about that. You know, and that's why some of us have been so passionate about the opera house, you know. Laura knocked me over the head early on when I got here, 'cause, you know, I was a sports guy, and, you know, we should have more sports fields, you know, we should do that, but Laura made me see that there's, kids do other things, too, you know. They, Andy, your kids are, you know, involved in the arts and theater and stuff.
Fire them.
We should make certain that we have facilities, that we have venues, that we have these opportunities for our kids to do that, you know. We don't, we don't wanna throw kids in the backup squad cars, you know. We don't, we want, we want them to go and have things to do. And I think that's, that's an important thing. Porter County is a great place to live, it really is, and we just, we gotta keep moving upon that. So I think it's important that, you know, we, we continue to focus on diversifying what we invest in, you know, the taxpayers' money, to make certain that when our kids graduate, maybe they wanna come back here, you know, and raise a family here, 'cause there's things here for them to do, there's jobs here for them to do, there's things for, you know, the kids, the families, so. No, Greg, you're right, it's important, you know, and I appreciate you going down there. Mike, I appreciate what you're doing, and, you know, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we just broke, today broke ground and upraised it for a skate park. Yeah, just this afternoon.
That, you know, yeah, on top of that, they, we used to, we used to think skating was a crime, right? Because kids were out there doing something with their skateboards or their bikes, you know, BMX them, they had long hair, maybe they spray painted it, but, you know, maybe they got some tattoos, but heck, they're doing, they're out there doing something. Give them a place to go.
Better than playing video games.
Basketball courts, yeah. Baseball diamonds. Opera houses. We need that stuff for these, for these kids and for the families to celebrate with that, so.
Do we have a, do we have a status on the opera house? I mean, we had a unanimous vote last year on a plan, and we are in, getting towards the end of April. Is there any news on that, on the progress of that project?
We, as liaisons, Greg and I have been meeting with the commissioner, Rick Nance, and as you know, we did have a plan that was voted and passed on unanimously, and, but right now, we're trying to, we're trying to come up with a plan. It's, again, it's like Mike said, to work together for the betterment of the county. And in my opinion, I would, I would stick with the plan that we had. But as you know, commissioners are the executive branch of our government, and they have, it's been told that they're not fully in agreement with the plan that we passed, and we're trying to compromise, come up with a good compromise that will benefit the people. Is there anything more you would like to say?
No, I think the word compromise is the key. It may be a small, like, all the repairs should be done to solidify the building, the roof and all that stuff. And then where the bathrooms, the thought is to perhaps slide out, not connect the buildings, but expand the building perhaps a little bit to give it the more room and the bathrooms it may need. But there's also, they're looking at the possibility of extending the back of it, so the architects are getting involved a little bit more, and they're trying to be creative to figure out plans of attack on what to do with it. But the goal is to preserve it and then possibly expand it. I know I'm being kinda vague, but we're waiting on the, the architects and Scott and them to go over there and see, well, can it work over here, or what about this? Kind of like shedding some new ideas into the mix of it, because there is some resistance, we know, about connecting it to the old sheriff's residence. So that's where the compromise is perhaps coming in, and I say perhaps because it's still in flux.
Is this a cheaper option? Is that the way it's looking?
Yes.
Oh, there's no doubt.
Very well said.
Because we have, we've allocated five million from ARPA.
That's right.
And I think the Opera House Foundation committed another two million. So is this, is this, so this change is because it's cheaper or because it's better?
There's some resistance to using the, there's some discussions of possibly renting out the. out the old facility, the, the residence, and bringing that as a revenue stream, and if that happens, then that would kill the plans to move into it, so, but that has not been solidified, either, there's a whole bunch of flux thoughts going in.
It is in the middle of discussion, however.
Nothing's off the table, we can agree on that.
Well, nothing's off the table, but.
Yeah, Mike, I think the current board of commissioners, as they are, took that plan and threw it away. They, they don't believe in moving the bathrooms into a connector piece, you know, which was, to me, with the main component to free up space using ARPA funds, move the congestion open to an open area, have some open space, use the old sheriff residence, you know, as freeing up some other space, offices and stuff, and they, they don't, they don't agree to that, so I don't know, and I think, as we were told months and months and months ago, get buy-in from the foundation, I think that two million commitment, they've chewed that away, I don't think they care for that, so they said get buy-in, then they said take your buy-in and go somewhere else, and so it's, yeah, so everything's kind of been stopped, and where it lands, I don't know. I don't, I'm still committed to the five million that I voted on.
Right, I am too. The, the art money, for all of the projects that has been given forth with the art money, I feel as if they're going on in progress, they're, they're, you know, but this particular one with the Memorial Opera House, and the county owns that block, and I would like to see it stay at that, and, and have it an art center for children and the community, however, they're wanting to do it cheaper. I guess I shouldn't say that, but maybe use money in other, other ways.
I think that's well said, maybe use some more money in other ways.
Well, I think this is a good example of what Mike was just talking about, about working together and compromise, and this is the first I've heard of any, so I appreciate, I appreciate you coming back with, with the information, the council, and hopefully, something can be, can be accomplished, because I think we all agreed, at least before Red got here, we all voted that that was a priority, and, you know, had an agreement on how we were going to spend that money, we had a plan in place, we unanimously voted for that. I know elections have consequences, but we can't go back and change everything we've done, because we have new people in positions, I mean, there's things that we should be moving forward, instead of being paralyzed by personal, it sounds like some personal thoughts, instead of what's best for the county, so, yeah, we'll be anxious to see what kind of plan we get, and how we proceed from here, because that ship should have sailed.
Well, and, and to answer the question too about the foundation, they haven't gotten involved yet, because they want to, they want to see what we're doing to kind of sort of before they commit to something too, so that's why they're not, but I know they want to do it, but they're, that's why they're waiting off too, so.
Appreciate it.
We need to get our act together before they jump into, if that makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
Another discussion before we tell Mike so long, within a German.
I'll listen to you, Jerry.
His motion, second. Second. All in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Same.
Oh, man, they want to hear more from Mike.
We got a picture, real quick, of this group?
Yeah.
With Mike?